Okay. Good evening, everyone. We're called order this meeting of the Willow City Council regular meeting for February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four. The time is five thirty one P. M. First, we'll be having our closed session at five thirty, followed by a regular session beginning at six P. M. Item two on our agenda this evening, a pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Vauden, would you do the honors leading us in the pledge, please?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. One nation, and for God's love. In the name of his own.
Thank you, David. Item three, roll call. City Clerk Amos Hoover, please.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Sprague.
Here.
Councilmember Vauden.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hudson.
Present.
Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Eras present, sir.
Thank you, Amos. Item four, changes to the agenda. City Manager Marty Brown.
There are no changes.
Councilmembers. Very good, thank you. Item five, closed session pursuant to government code section five four nine five four point three, the public will have an opportunity to directly address the legislative body on the item below prior to the council convening into closed session. Public comments are generally restricted to three minutes. Item five A, conference with legal counsel, substantial risk of litigation, potential exposure to litigation pursuant to section five four nine five six point nine print B print. All right, is there any public comment tonight from the audience in reference to item five A before we move into closed session? Hearing none. Time is five thirty three P. M. And we'll move into closed session at this time. Councilmembers, you ready?
Yeah.
No, but let's go anyway.
Yeah.
Staff, you ready?
Oh.
Hey, Chief. Perfect time. He's not officially late. Well, now he is. Amos, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending. We're reconvening into open session from our closed session session. Again, this Willow City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four. Report out from item five A, our closed session. No reportable action direction given to staff. Moving on to item six, public comment and consent calendar forum. All matters on this consent calendar are considered routine and are approved by one motion and one vote unless council members or the city manager first request that a matter be removed for separate discussion and action. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning consent calendar items or regarding matters that are not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the mayor and council members and not to staff and or the audience. And by state law, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. First of all, is there any public comment tonight on any matters not on the agenda? So please approach reporting. Nothing, no public comment? Okay. How about public comment in reference to our consent calendar items? Anything from the public? No, very good. Item six A, register approval, this is consent counter. Recommended action is approve the general checking payroll and direct deposit check registers. Item six B, municipal approval recommended action is consider approval of the February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four city council meeting minutes. In reference, item six B, Madam City Manager and Mr. City Clerk, I noticed that on those minutes from February thirteenth, under item eight, eight A, the public hearing and appeal of M. U. P. twenty three dash zero three, it was not included in the in the minutes that a resolution was. It was moved and seconded, moved by Councilmember Thomas, seconded by Councilmember Vauden. And to approve the the resolution, to adopt the resolution with various conditions, just notation for the record.
That correction will be made. Thank you for.
Very good. Thank you.
Good catch.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hoover, taking care of that. Pleasure, counsel, in reference to the consent calendar tonight.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Mr. Vauden has moved to approve the consent calendar as amended. Mr. Vauden, would that improve the amendments to the resolution? Okay, that does include the amendments to the resolution as well for the conditions of approval.
I can second that.
Mr. Thomas has seconded item six A and six B, further discussion?
Just a quick comment, not that I want to pull anything off for third further discussion, but it seems like Marty has provided us in the past a brief and analysis of those things. I think you said it about a threshold of five thousand or something like that that you gave us an explanation for. Did I miss that or does that?
I did initially a few times because there were questions about it, but I didn't get any questions from anybody this time in regard. You're talking about the register, right?
Right, on the.
I didn't. I didn't get any questions from anybody on the council regarding the register.
Okay.
If you if you'd like me to follow up with an email on anything, I'm happy to do so.
I will. I just thought you automatically did it a time or two for the those non-reoccurring.
Right.
Expenditure. So that's fine.
I can follow up with an email.
No, I'll email them to you. I thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Sprague?
No.
Any further comment, discussion? All those in favor, approval of item six A and six B is amended, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? There's your names. Thank you. Item seven, discussion and action counter. All matters in this section of the agenda are discussed and will be acted on individually. Individuals wish wishing to address the city council concerning any of these items are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. And please address your comments to the mayor and council members and not to staff and or the audience. When the mayor calls for public comment, please raise your hand to be acknowledged. While not required, the city requests that you please state your name clearly for the audio recording. And again, by state law, the city council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any items not appearing on the posted agenda. Are there any comments in reference to the action counter items seven A or seven B this evening at this time from the audience? Hearing none. Okay, move forward with the item. Thank you. Move forward with item seven A. Item seven A, emergency repair and routine vehicle maintenance maintenance of utility and fire truck. Consider adoption of a resolution authorizing a budget amendment of nine thousand dollars to account number three zero one dash one five zero dash four three zero 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 for emergency repairs of the fire department apparatus and other routine vehicle maintenance. City Manager Marty Brown, before we move to Fire Chief Monk, do you have anything?
No, I think that the fire chief has got to handle one of them.
This is the chief's area.
Yeah, sure is.
Good evening, Chief Monk. Good to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. The item before you tonight is a request for an additional nine thousand dollars to our vehicle maintenance fund. We had a damp. We had some damage occur to the two thousand seventeen Ford F. Two fifty during our recent flood events, trying to evacuate people from the Walmart area and get them some some help and back across the water. Caused some a fair amount of damage to the motor. They ended up having the City of Orland mechanic, we towed it up to him. He looked at it and said that it needed a top end because of a bent rod. The City of Orland mechanic sourced four different manufacturers and dealers to try to find the parts. So only one place actually even had the part. And they were, I believe, twenty-ish days out from making them. So there's a significant weight on the parts. Since the city mechanic ordered the parts, he accepted a position with the City of Chico as a mechanic there. And with the reduction in staff of at Orland, we no longer have access to use the Orland mechanics to work on our fire trucks. As you know, that's going to be an issue moving forward with our mechanic also not currently working. The Orland mechanic was able to find a mechanic that could do the work for us. I talked to the mechanic at Harris Truck. He said that he thinks probably that it's going to come in somewhere around seventy five hundred to seventy five hundred to seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, but to put eight just in case there's some extra gaskets or seals that he ends up needing to get. The request for the extra thousand dollars on top is to finish out the rest of the fiscal year for oil changes and other little odds and ends that break on fire trucks. Our budget this year started off at ten thousand dollars and right after the first of the year, we had our ladder truck ladder tested and there was a hydraulic ram failure, which caused an emergency repair that we had to have done. I believe at Golden State Hydraulic over in Chico, which ended up being around sixty five hundred, seven thousand dollars, which ate up the majority of the budget less than three weeks into the fiscal year. While this item does have a nine thousand dollar negative impact to the general fund, we have had some savings in the fire department with the preposition assignments that we've been taking. Myself taking those assignments as the strike team leader. Those salary savings says here in the staff report, seventy five hundred to ten thousand. I actually ended up getting back two of the invoices last night. And I think we're probably actually going to be closer to fifteen thousand to seventeen thousand so far to date. That's between salary savings, fuel costs that that were incurred during the preposition assignment and then the administrative fee. So I always like to bring a solution with the problem. The problem is that we broke a fire truck. The solution is is that during the course of providing services to the city, we were able to save some money through these O. E. S. Preposition assignments, which I think I've talked to most of you about in the past with how beneficial they are for us. So with that, if you guys have any other questions, let me know.
It's nice to have a little silver lining on that. That's good. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Councilmembers, any questions, comment?
Yeah, I have a question. The water damage occurred where?
At the Walmart parking lot.
So it wasn't trying to save somebody that goes past a area?
No. No, there were people that were in the Walmart parking lot as the water was coming up there. I don't know if you guys saw any of the pictures. There were a couple of cars that had water all the way up into the car itself. And so we needed to be able to get over into the parking lot to get people out and then see how many people were over there so we could figure out what the plan was going to be because at that point we didn't know if the water was still coming up or if it was starting to come down.
Thank you. Somebody we could look to to cover some of that.
Any further response?
Yeah. Sheriff Fargey Monk, a couple. I have a lot of equipment. I had a lot of equipment. And when things got broken or damaged, the question was, how did it happen? What did we do that we shouldn't have done that resulted in water getting in the motor and hydraulic and the cylinders? And what could we have done to avoid it? And where does the responsibility lie with the driver, with the vehicle? It's not like the point fingers. It's just to help understand. So the next time this might happen, whomever is involved will not drive it into the lake.
Well, funny story. I was the one driving because I wanted to. I wanted to do it because I wasn't a hundred percent confident on how it was going to go. And so I wanted to do it because I wouldn't ask anybody to do something that I wouldn't do. And so I was the one that was driving. I how it's not going to happen again is I'm going to not go. The other guys were giving me some some well-deserved flack. Because that night was the worst night of flooding, but that we still had, I think we did ended up doing four or five more water rescues. And every time I would start driving out, they always throw snorkel at me or and I was I was pretty gun shy after that. I had definitely wear some wear some eat some crow and and wear that on my face. But I'm the first person that'll tell you when I make a mistake. It was going really good until that last little dip where the curb drops and that was that was when it sucked it up. And you know, it's not an excuse. If it was that close, I probably shouldn't have gone anyways. But hindsight's twenty twenty and now I know.
But we learned.
Yep.
And in order to get water in an engine, you have to get the water into an intake port. So that means you were in deep, deep water, son.
I was in deep water.
Okay. And I have another question that's curiosity. And I'm really proud that you're able to generate revenue by providing services outside our realm, the seven to fifteen or a thousand dollars. What I'd be interested in is there are costs associated with that. So is if we get fifteen grand, what's the net after we deduct what we would have otherwise had?
That's the net.
That is the net.
Yep.
Very good.
Yep. And that's all about fifteen days of.
All the labor costs and all that is is already extracted from the gross.
Yes, sir.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vauden. Any further discussion, question, comment from the council? Well, Chief, don't beat yourself up. Okay. Been out there working in floodwaters through several different floods myself, and we resorted to tractors and bankouts just because of that, you know, often. So. But no, you know, you're in the public safety business long enough and you've been in a number of years. What do you have, ten years in now or more?
Twelve.
Twelve years? I was involved in several on duty emergency vehicle traffic collisions. One of them was off road and they were all involved pursuing fleeing felons. And I mean, it happens, right? It happens. So I received that day, I received my gauge here. The one at my house here, not not the ranch, but one and a quarter inches in about thirty five minutes of rain that day. And that Walmart drainage, as we know, I mean, it sped by that the ditch that parallels, you know, east or west of I. Five, parallel in the airport, and it just inundated, right? It's just inundated. And it's happened before at Walmart and that water comes up fast. And and when it's happened before, a number of employees, I know my niece was my niece was trapped out there going to work or, you know, just arrived on work one time, you know, at a previous flood. So I mean, it happens. So and in the in the emergency operations, public safety sector, it happens. I won't use the complete the complete saying here because we're, you know, in an open session and being professional, but I don't beat myself up over it. There you go. So.
Did water get into the building at all?
It was up to the door. It didn't end up getting into the building, thankfully.
It was impressive for us. They had to shut down half of one sixty two and impressive like the last time.
I drove around.
Yeah. They were shut for a half a day.
Yeah, I'm definitely glad it was me because I wouldn't want one of the paid staff or volunteers getting the rationing from not just my own department, but ninety five percent of the other fire chiefs in the county.
Well, being a leader in the agency did the right thing there, Chief. So thank you.
I'm glad I had my waiters on. I wasn't going to name you.
I understand. I understand there was a witness close by. Okay. Thank you, Chief. Anything further from the council? From from the audience and public comment? Okay. Hearing none. Pleasure of the council in reference item seven A. And there is a resolution attached.
Move for approval.
Mr. Sprague has moved to approve item seven A and the ordinance. I'm sorry, the resolution authorizing a budget amendment of nine thousand dollars to account three zero one dash one five zero dash four three zero 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 for emergency repairs of the fire department apparatus and other routine vehicle maintenance. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Vauden has the second. Further discussion? Mr. Hoover, this will be a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Fred, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Councilmember Sprague?
Yes.
Councilmember Vauden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Hi, Mayor Terry Johnson. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Be safe out there. Item seven B, proposed sales tax policy statement ordinance and resolution. City Manager Marty Brown, good evening. Good, Marty.
Good evening. The city attorney and I are going to pitch hit on this this evening, this particular item. This item that's before you is staff seeking some policy direction from the council. It's on two items, but they're, you know, they are related to the sales tax ordinance and resolution. As you may recall, at the January twenty third meeting, the council gave general direction that provided after getting legal analysis from the city attorney that some sort of policy statement, whether it be a resolution or a generic statement, would be possible as a as not really a companion, but as part of the sales tax ordinance and resolution that would come back to you at a later date. And as you can see from the packet, the city attorney did do some analysis and generally said a generic statement is is possible and attached the sample resolution from the city of Benicia. And certainly Caroline can speak more precisely and more detail about that. I also wanted to highlight the other item was the what's being coined as the taxpayer protection initiative that is looks like it could or is going to be on the ballot in November. And so there is some concern that that particular initiative, should it pass, how would it impact a sales tax measure? It was of considerable great robust dialogue and conversation at the city managers conference just a few weeks ago. The proposed initiative would impact any sales tax measure that's passed since January first of two thousand and twenty two. So that's back in the November twenty second election. Some of the things I I mentioned in the staff report, an example is that the initiative would require a sunset date. If you recall, on January twenty third, the council gave direction to not have an expiration date. So this initiative would be requiring one, having both of these items potentially the city sales tax and the and this particular initiative on the ballot in November raises the question about whether or not the council would want to look at making sure that any sales tax ordinance of the cities be proactively compliant with the potential voter-approved taxpayer protection. I say that in air quotes, taxpayer protection initiative. And so that's the second half of the conversation for this particular item. Probably going to have to continue the discussion, but I think that the city attorney can also give you her initial first blanch legal opinion on what that looks like and how it could adversely impact the city. Certainly, I think it is fair to say it will be an adverse impact if it was approved. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Carolyn to make some comments on either on both of those.
Thank you. Yes. Just initial review and research that I did this week on the initiative really changes how the city can pass. I was not at the initial meeting in January where the council gave direction to staff to draft an ordinance for the sales tax and also a policy statement. But I did provide the council, as Marty said, with the research about that policy statement if it were to be a general pass. And I just want to point out specifically the last sentence.
This is this is from the letter of opposition back in September that was recommended. Yeah, okay.
Um. Should you want to issue a statement of intent publicly, the key is to make it expressly clear that the tax would be for any and all general purposes, including examples that you may have identified the city needs, but not limited to those. So that is under this legal memo is under the current law as it stands. The initiative would change a lot of things, but one of the things that would change is the ability for the council to even give a general statement of its intent for use. Specifically, the initiative would expressly prohibit local advisory measures, which allow local voters to express a preference for how a local general tax dollars would be spent. It also, like Marty mentioned, and necessitates any new taxes or higher tax that are imposed and only be imposed for a specific time period. So these are indirect, I guess, contradiction of what the council directed staff to include in the sales tax. I think it also invalidated the upland decision that allows the majority of local voters to pass special taxes. The measure specifies that taxes proposed by the initiative are subject to the same rules as taxes placed on the ballot by a city. So in essence, I think it handcuffs local governments much more than prior law or existing law right now. And I just wanted to start that discussion with the council. I certainly haven't had the time to do a full legal memo, which I would like to do for the council regarding the initiative and what that looks like for what the council would like me to draft as far as the sales tax but I wanted to get this information out to you as soon as I could so that we could start the discussion, the council could start the discussion and also whatever questions you have, you can post to me and I can try to answer your notes.
Yeah, thank you very much, counsel.
If I could just add also, it just as an addition, I think some of you know this, maybe all of you do, that Governor Newsom did file an emergency petition to the Supreme Court stating basically that this unlawfully amends the state's constitution. And the League of California Cities wrote an amicus brief in support of that position. And if that's heard by the Supreme Court and the Supreme Court was to determine to be in agreement with the governor, that would take it off the ballot. I think part of the question is, will that would that happen in time for the November ballot and or what would be the Supreme Court's decision? Who knows the answer to that, but just wanted to to know that that concurrently is also happening at the same time.
California Supreme Court.
That's yes, that's my understanding. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Marty. Counselor?
Well, just just while that's happening, I think the council is going to be tasked with deciding do if the council wants to draft an ordinance that would maybe be compliant because the other issue really here is, and I let Marty know this, is that we don't, even if this initiative does pass, let's say it doesn't get challenged in the Supreme Court of California, and it does pass, we don't know what in essence, what a example of that ordinance that meets those qualifications will even look like. Because this is pretty different than what we've seen prior. So I just want to put that out there also that there's not going to be that, you know, they they wrote this initiative and did not include a sample or sales tax measure that would actually fit these parameters of the supposed new law.
So when will this court meet about this, the Supreme Court?
We don't know.
We don't know. So it could actually be after the vote and.
That is correct.
All these are actually. So we can't do like a option A. If this goes through, there's option B. We just need to do one or the other, correct? We just need to find one that fits.
Well.
That's all the boxes of this.
I think I think there's a couple possibilities. I mean, one is we're we're, you know, and you and I already talked about this, Councilmember Hudson, we're super early on trying to get together that ordinance and resolution. And the the intent of that was to use the opportunity and the time to educate the public about the need, right? You brought up in January, we need to get this approved so we can start talking about it and educating. So we're really early. So the option, you know, one option is to wait longer until we're closer to the deadline that would be required by the county clerk's office, which I'm guessing is in, we haven't, I haven't confirmed that yet, but maybe.
It's November. It's going to be like the end of July, beginning of August.
So, you know, one option is we wait longer to see what the result of that is and be ready to go forward if if it goes to the Supreme Court or it got overturned. Another option is to do something more, you know, now based on whatever research the city attorney finally, you know, comes up with legal analysis and a legal recommendation to the council and do something sooner that possibly is tailored towards this potential initiative. I mean, there there's a lot of different moving parts and ways to look at this or do something that's tailored to the initiative now. And if, you know, miraculously something changes in the first meeting in June, we're amending our ordinance and resolution that you approved in March. I suppose that's.
The other issue is if it goes to the ballot and doesn't pass. Again, the same ballot. So you have whatever you created on the ballot. Again, I haven't been able to deep dive into this. Maybe there are other avenues that I don't know today, but I will certainly look and see if I can find that and talk to other city meetings about this issue because we're not the only jurisdiction facing deficit or meeting sales tax, et cetera. So and the other thing I wanted to bring up is that this is a special project for the city attorney's office. So anything that the council directs me to do is above and beyond the city attorney's contract. They'll want the council to be cognizant of that as well.
So my idea of writing two ordinances, both for the ballot, one that meets and complies and one that doesn't, and then tell everybody to vote yes on both would cost us twice as much. Okay.
I don't know if you want.
You just vote yes on both. It's an easy message.
So this would put the vote to require two thirds to pass and would require a sunset clause.
And anything that is not in compliance from January of two thousand and twenty two on.
Right.
Would be. Would be invalidated.
Yeah, which doesn't matter to us really, but, so that's what I'm wondering is if we're going to put something on the November ballot that fits the bill for this, it would have to stand up to the two-thirds vote scrutiny as well as have a sunset clause.
Would not, and you would not be able to give that policy statement that you, of what you want.
Which is the first half of the staff report, right? How you want to, your intentions for the sales tax, you can no longer say anything under this initiative.
So bureaucracy at its best.
Well, that won't matter though.
Taxpayer protection, yet it says limits voters' authority and input.
Yeah, don't you feel protected?
And then it says expressly prohibits local advisory measures which allow local voters to express a preference on how the local general tax dollars should be spent.
That's good news, Rick, because that's how come it's not going to pass.
We live in a size.
It's not going to pass, you guys.
Ridiculous.
I didn't pick up on the two-thirds vote for, for a general sales tax.
The initiative reads that it is actually two-thirds of the legislature, the state legislature, and the majority of votes for a general tax. But again, I, that is just the summary of the initiative. I have not been able to deep dive into it.
So the best idea would be to push this until next meeting and get a better understanding of what we're up against?
Certainly, but also I would welcome your question specifically of what you want more information on.
Research.
The real issue is that I'm afraid that you're asking the question and I won't have an answer because this is initiative and.
Right.
A lot of jurisdictions obviously are against it, but we don't know what it looks like in the real world.
Right.
Yeah, and, and the other thing is, is the other piece of this is the mass, is fees. It's also talks about fees, which doesn't impact the sales tax, but the language for fees says anything that is, you know, a reasonable, the language is a reasonable, is a reasonable amount or something, a reasonable standard for what you can charge. Again, underscoring the point that they're being so vague that we don't even know if what we come up with will comply because they're not giving examples and they don't know what, like a reasonable person would think.
The actual cost of the fee is minimum amount necessary, and now they've changed the burden for the jurisdiction to prove that. It's the actual cost or the most minimum amount necessary by clear and convincing evidence. So they're basically making it impossible for jurisdictions to have raised fees, signed fees, or making it harder for the, for the tax. Ultimately, what it, under the guise of.
And since we're doing our master fee schedule, that's going to make that possible too.
It's going to affect the other.
Other things as well.
Things we're doing.
Yeah, other things.
Yeah. But again, I want.
No, you're fine. I think my three questions, I just have three questions as far as what to look into on it.
And I, okay, yeah, so I actually would prefer if you could, if we could get that in writing.
Yeah.
You want us to email them all to Marty and have Marty port them on?
Yeah, I think that's the easiest way.
That'd be fine.
But I just want to, you know, alert the council that there might not be answers to some of the questions.
Oh, sure. No, the, you know, well-stated, counselor, I mean, this is very fluid at this point, just like Vice Mayor Hudson asked a question about the two-thirds vote and Mr. Greg was surprised, I was surprised at that also because my understanding, it's still a majority vote, but there would be a sunset clause needed if this were to pass.
The summary says, the actual, I read the actual initiative today, and it includes a two-third vote on, from the legislature, but I don't know if that's applying to just state taxes or if that's local taxes as well. So that's why I want to go further into it. And again, some of these are not well-written anyway.
Sure.
So they might not be clear, which is why I'm saying there might not be an answer for you of what they actually mean by the initiative. And they only, this happens a lot actually, where cases or laws get put in, passed and put into service, so to speak, and then we have to figure out what they actually mean.
Yeah, how to implement it.
In court, right? Because it doesn't actually make sense or they're unclear in the actual law.
Well, well, just like, you know, Rick, Rick mentioned, the language is absurd. This is absurd.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Marty used the term vague, absolutely, extremely vague.
And they are also asking that in the title of the sales tax, that like four or five different things be included. So the title itself would be like four sentences long, which again, just confuses.
Yeah.
In the state of California, the citizens will not be in control of their own destiny the way this led, this, this potential.
But it's to protect you.
Right, yeah. Mr. Vaden?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that. So I did the research and read the material and checked it out, including the law, including the fact when we were going to write a letter opposing this particular measure before the state. And so here's my thoughts. What are, what are the facts? The facts are, we need a 1.5% sales tax increase in order to survive. Fact, 1.5 on the November ballot, and it has to pass or we go belly up in summer of '25. Fact, this law is not a law. Fact, it is ridiculously written, it is opposed by everybody, every city in the state of California, some wrote letters, some did not, doesn't mean they're not opposed. It's opposed by the governor who's going to take very proactive action to intervene to keep it from coming to the November ballot. The states around us are looking at California about this particular concept of management of the cities and counties and the state going, are you crazy, California? To which they conclude, yes, but then they move on and say, that could come to us next. So they're fearful of the precedent and the prognosis of future advancement of this ludicrous, ridiculous de-functionalizing of city government and county government. Fact, so here's the deal, it isn't going to pass. We are, we should not, we don't even know most of the information about this particular law. It, it has proponents of means and wealth, but that's happened before. Ultimately, intelligence will prevail. Whatever it turns out to be written about, it, it will, it will not pass. We are acting out of fear tonight. We are afraid what might happen. That's not good business judgment to act based on, we're afraid it might happen. We need the sales tax. If we convolute our sales tax proposal to the citizens of Willows, they will reject it. There are people in the city that stood in this room and said, you will never pass a sales tax ordinance or whatever in the city of Willows. It's never happened, it isn't going to. However, most of the people I talked to believe that we can and will pass it because they believe that we truly need the money to help them, not to pay ourselves more money, but to help the city of Willows grow and prosper and extract and attract other forms of revenue, which is the way that we will hopefully succeed. The League of Cities have opposed to this. State government, I already mentioned, clearly it's not in the best interest of the people despite the wonderful wording, tax initiative to save the public or whatever the hell it is. So I don't believe it'll go on the ballot. I don't believe if by some strange coincidence it did, it would not pass. I say to you that we should not modify our approach on our sales tax objective, which is a fact, that we need the money. And the more we convolute, confuse and reconfigure variations of what we need to the public who spends this much time thinking about it, the more likely we will not pass our sales tax. So it won't matter if this law passes because we won't. So we need to think focused, pointed, direct, and stay the course to get 1.5% sales tax increase voted on positively in November and the money flowing in in early of '25. So again, I don't think we should spend any amount of time moaning and groaning, especially on extra budget out of the general fund that we don't have, to, to fight the fear that this thing might in fact come to pass. So what if it does and we take a straight line course? Are we any worse off? What if we mess with it and we can, you know, write several versions of the ordinance and try to explain it to the people and they are so confused, all they go is no? We're still in the same place. So I, my, my thought as a council member is that we simply proceed forward with a specific focused sales tax proposal and, and promotion and sales to our citizens on the positive results they will get from it and let this other screwball thing blow up on its own merit.
Unless it doesn't, and then we're sitting in hot water because our.
Fear.
Or, go ahead.
No, we're not because we're nowhere off.
I was going to say, there's another, the other option too, is that if it does pass expletively, there's going to, there's going to be challenges to, so in the interim.
It'll be held up.
That it's, it's going to take years to challenge a new law in the, with ordinances that were passed either at the same time or. Which is another, you know, I guess my point is, we don't know what it would look like if it were to pass and be challenged. Certainly even Willows would challenge it if their, if our ordinance passed.
And could I, I, I would like it if you would, even if you're going to email questions, I think you should say them, you know, out loud, Councilmember Hudson and anybody else, and make comments just like Councilmember Vaden did because not only do we need to hear it, but you need to hear it from each other. And this is really the only place that you can do this. So you all need to have a good, you know, robust dialogue. And I hope, I hope at the end of it, we're still tasking the city attorney with another level of research and coming back for yet another layer of peeling off the, you know, layers off the onion for discussion before you make a final decision, whether it's Councilmember Vaden's direction or some other direction, hopefully. Anyways.
I agree, Ms. Brown. Vice Mayor Hudson, would you like to go with your questions?
Yeah, mine questions would be, what, what would this do to our policy statement? Would it remove it or would we be allowed to keep it? Is it going to require a sunset clause? If so, how far out can we go? Can we go 20 years? Can we only go 10? Is there a limit on that? Is it, it's, I think we already answered that it's not going to require a two-thirds vote from citizens. And then also what fees are going to be impacted that we currently have and what fees and how we're writing it up are going to be impacted.
All fees.
All of them will be impacted.
You're redoing the master fee schedule right now, which would, it would be.
Every fee that we have would be impacted by this, potentially, if we don't have good reasoning for them.
Well, and we have, even if you do, it's not clear, like what is.
The actual cost is the minimum amount necessary.
So my concern with the sales tax part is that even though Councilmember Vaden says it's not going to be so, words don't put it into action. If it does go through, I'd rather have one sales tax measure that we're putting out there that we can all agree on that fits within whatever hoops they want this to, to go through, right? Because I'm, I know where I'm going to vote on it, I know how I feel on it, but I can't speak for every citizen in the state of California. I've seen them make a lot of mistakes to where I think they did a lot of dumb moves and when they vote. That's my personal opinion. And unfortunately, just because I think I'm going to vote a certain way, doesn't necessarily mean that somebody else is going to vote the same way. And so I don't necessarily trust that it's not going to get there. And I would rather not be sitting here where the city is, you know, in court trying to fight this and everything else. I would rather say, hey, this is our sales tax, this is what we're able to do right now. This will get us out of the, the hot seat that we're currently in. No matter what comes down the pipeline at us, this is what's going to work, this is what's going to fit, this is what we can stand behind 100%. It's, you're right, because if we wait and we put something out that we put in what we have and the other, this other thing that they're trying to pass goes through, then we're right back to square one. We're still trying to figure out, then we're really in an emergency, then we're really trying to push it onto the March ballot. And maybe it goes through that, but if, even if we can survive long enough to get it.
There won't be a March ballot next year.
Oh, there you go. Sorry, thank you for reminding me of that. So.
Well, you could pay for a special election.
A special election.
Out of what?
You, you, you'll be on fumes.
You could do a bake sale or something, yeah, and raise the money to the special.
We're doing that for recreation.
So that's my thing is that I would rather have it, make sure it's going to be a grand slam home run, but I understand what the, what you're saying, Carolyn, is that it's, you know, it probably will get held up with a lot of court cases and everybody fighting it, even if it does pass, if it even gets on the ballot. My thing is, is even if that's six months after it passes and it still gets held up, then we're still back to square one. And maybe we receive some money from it, but is it going to be enough to hold us to rewrite one and market a new sales tax to get us through?
Isn't typically when you, when you goes to court, you can't spend the money? That's what happened in Yuba County, went to court, it was, it was, you know, the Jarvis, who is it, the Jarvis Group, who filed a lawsuit against Yuba County when they passed a one-cent sales tax and they collected, but they weren't allowed to spend. They had to like put it in an escrow account until it was resolved and it went, it, they, the courts sided with the Jarvis Group and then they went back on appeal and the county won, but that took like a year. And so for a year, the county, I mean, luckily Yuba County had money, they weren't in the situation we're in, but.
So why put us in that situation?
Couldn't spend it, they couldn't spend it.
It depends. I mean, that's usually a public stay and.
Yeah.
Either, I mean, it's just part of litigation. There is or is not a stay granted. It doesn't, I mean, sometimes a stay is not granted because the status quo is granted, which would be the.
That we wrote this underneath the.
Tax measure passed under that current law at the time. And so, you know, there's a fair argument, I think, in that piece. But again, that's all litigation, that's all what ifs. Again, more what ifs.
Yeah.
The other issue is that, or that I already brought up, was that if, if, if it does pass, again, we don't know, even if we tried today to write something that is within the bounds of this initiative, assuming it's going to be law, I can't tell you a promise that it will be because I and nobody, no other city attorney in the state of California will know until it passes and it's challenged in court. So that's another concern, you know, the famous words that lawyers always answer to questions is, it depends. Because I can't answer that premise that.
Who put this?
Certainly try to draft an, an ordinance that meets all the new criteria, but I can't say with 100% certainty or, you know, even 51% certainty that that would be what is going to hold up in a, in a court of law because it has never been challenged.
California Business Roundtable is what it puts together with Howard Jarvis and I think tax, I can't remember the other tax organization.
Maybe.
No, that was just my two cents was if we can get something that's as close to a grand slam to meet all the criteria, then that, I think, would be the safest and best bet to make sure that we're not the ones being held up if it goes to court and gets challenged.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Well, I like the question, how long can a sunset clause be? I think that's kind of critical mass. My concern about trying to draft an ordinance that fits what we don't know what it needs to be is effectively saying we vote for the ordinance. We vote for this new law because we said, well, we tried to, to do everything that fits this, but we don't know what it was. So we're saying we're, we're supporting that measure. And I, I'm probably more in the camp of Mr. Vaden says, we draft a resolution like presented from Benicia. I like the terms of that one. I think it reads well. Doesn't need a whole lot more polish and spit just to put into, sort of, Willows. And we move forward with an idea of how long that sunset could be. This, this one has a 12-year sunset.
And we can, and I was going to recommend.
Could it be 15? Could it be five? Could it be?
Going to recommend the example, but I certainly can do research on specific sunset. But then I go back to, again.
We only need the sunset if you're agreeing with.
You have to have a specific period and a sunset.
For the, if.
For the new initiative.
Yeah.
Correct.
But I'm saying if you don't think the initiative's going to pass, then we don't, you don't have to worry about a sunset with.
Right. Or.
Well, I was just going to say, the other thing is, is that if you do any pieces of what's in the initiative, the roundtable initiative, the taxpayer protection initiative, if you're going to do any of those pieces, then you're, you're sort of already back to saying, we're going to try to comply and there's. then you're, you're sort of already back to saying, we're going to try to comply. And there's pieces you don't want to comply with. So if it passes and you've complied with the sunset, they don't say, oh, that's okay. You passed on the, you proved on the sunset piece, but you didn't on these other things that are in the initiative. So we're going to let you keep your tax.
To put another spin on that, though, as a lawyer, I would look at that and say, well, they're in compliance on most of them. So let's say you had a sunset clause in them. And so we're not going to challenge necessarily this ordinance or this tax measure because it only has, for instance, the policy statement or something that's not.
Substance.
One thing is not, yes. One thing is not.
A policy statement we use.
We won't be challenging it. It'll be statewide.
Yes.
It's true, but somebody could be, somebody will, initially what will happen if this passes.
Which it will.
And you have all of these laws that have passed, not only in November, but also since January of twenty two. You have all of these laws that have been in effect and passed, right? Someone or a group is going to challenge a specific tax.
In a big city.
Or they, couldn't they come up with a whole list? They could scrutinize and see, there's twenty cities.
Action cities.
Yeah, could they do a class action kind of thing or not? That wouldn't be what it called, but it wouldn't be called.
Be against many.
Yeah. I mean, it is possible.
Mr. Vodden.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you once again. We won't be sued. Willow, City of Willow will not spend money on lawyers to deal with any aspect of this. Except when, if we act in fear and try to devise some kind of response to it that we try to sell to the public that is so confusing that even I won't vote for it. But I want to share with you one thing that's obvious. Great success and great progress, definitive results often require the assumption of risk. If you want to remove all the risks of the possibility that we might write a sales tax proposal that could fall under the auspices of this ridiculous program, then, then you can remove as much risk as you want. I submit to you that for the benefit of the citizens of the city of Willow, that we assume the risk in the best interest of the sales tax proposal and the result that we need, which is money and not get engaged in this tax possibility, potential, maybe, what if? And, and destroy our very first step in the process, which is to sell the community of Willow, the citizens of Willow, the benefits they'll receive from the sales tax. They'll be, that's, so risk is necessary. We cannot remove all risk. Too many governmental operations do try to remove all risk and they end up with nothing.
We're not removing all risk. A, we're asking for one and a half cents, which is the largest mistake. But the risk that we're also taking is that the city will pass it, citizens will vote on it. My fault is plan for the worst. We can hope for the best. We can hope and imagine and dream for the best, but I would rather plan for the worst.
I would not. So we agree to disagree on that one.
We will agree to disagree.
Yes. And I hope that, that we do not try to create a, a proposal that deals with every potential outcome that's negative. Or as I said before, remove all risk.
Thank you, gentlemen. Before we move on, Mr. Thomas, I think.
No.
Mr. Craig.
I do. A couple of comments. Thank you. First off, I would suggest, Rick, that preparing for the worst, as, as Councilman says, it isn't an admission that we agree with the initiative that you don't like that's going on. I, I don't know that. I think that's an overreach, but I am inclined to look at this too and say, if, if in fact, we do agree that we're going to pass this or move it forward, that it has to be as bulletproof as you possibly can make it. So another person that's in disagreement with you, Mr. Vodden, in regard to it. Interestingly enough, though, yesterday I got cornered at a store by a previous city council member that said that we were foolish and while this person supported the sales tax, said that we were absolutely foolish and going after one and a half percent, that that would never pass, that we would be better off to go three quarters percent this time, three quarters of a percent next time, three quarters of a and then, behold, you're up to two and a half percent and nobody even.
Did you tell him one point five was your idea?
Pardon me?
Did you tell him one point five was your idea?
It was.
Actually, I said one point five was probably not enough.
Okay.
And so, because that's the way I see it. So to my questions, if I understood you correctly, that you would like to have our questions voiced so the good people that are watching us can hear what we're saying and then we can have this interaction as well, and then to present these questions to you as well. So if I'm not mistaken, correct me, city manager, it seemed like when we had the presentation last time on the budget, that the one and a half percent would likely have to be increased two years, two years from now again, that it actually took two percent to get us to be a little bit more flush beyond that time. So how far would the one and a half percent actually take? Just help me with my memory.
Uh, the estimate is that one and a half percent would cure the structural deficit, which systemically and structurally is, is after, not this year, but in the next two years will start to just be one point four to one point five million. It'll cure that deficit and it'll result in about a ten percent general fund reserve. And the GFOA, the Government Financial Officers Association recommends a seventeen percent general fund reserve minimum.
Right. And we would be at ten percent.
That is correct.
Back to my thing that that doesn't really bring, it, it fixes the somewhat short term and so on. So that's fine. Thank you. One of the questions that Rick kind of alluded to as well as talking about the, the sunset period in Benicia was a twelve year period that was built into the initiative with a two year review or a ten year review, it appeared that they would be preparing for that. So my question is that if we do, if we were to do a sales tax now, whether it be three quarters percent, one percent, one and a half percent, and we put a sunset on it, does that then prohibit creating another sales tax increase before they, that sunset expires or, or we hit that sunset date?
Great question. Right, that would be that no, if you wanted to present to your constituent.
I'm sorry. Pull the microphone closer. Thank you.
I don't know specifically. I haven't done that research and I'm happy to, I'm writing that down so I can include that question in my research, but my gut would say that no, that doesn't preclude you from asking for another one or putting another one on the ballot. It's just a matter of whether or not you think you'll be able to get another one passed while there's still that other one there.
Right. Okay. Thank you. And then also there's, in the initiative on the Benicia is that anyone that sorry, opposes it, excuse me, this was on their ballot, arguments against the measure shall be submitted no later than et cetera, et cetera, to the city clerk. Who writes those arguments against if, if there were any? And I'm not volunteering for it. That's not my point is, my point is that who would write those?
Who would write a, like a, an opinion against a sales tax measure?
Yes.
Pretty much anybody can do that. I did one in Vallejo.
I think, are you asking about the?
On the ballot, when there's like, when you do an opposition and you write, is that correct, Councilmember?
That's correct. The, the Benicia resolution that you gave us concluded at the very bottom of the pages, page twenty seven on, on your agenda, page twenty seven, the very bottom in the resolution, whereas the proposed measure will include strict accountability requirements such as, whoops, excuse me, I'm sorry. Next page, it's on the, on the ballot measure itself as it shows up on page twenty nine, section seven, arguments for for or against the measure will be submitted to the clerk no later than December fifteenth, twenty twenty three.
Anybody can do that.
I think that's any voter in the.
Anybody.
Yes.
Is there a cost associated with that? Do you know?
I don't know, but I think that there is. Because otherwise you have like a thou, you could have like a thousand arguments for and against. I think there's a, we can double check that, but I think there might be a cost associated.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think what, if I picked up this, and I don't know that we gave Carolyn direction on this, for her to be able to go ahead and move forward with some of her deeper research, we need to understand that there's a cost associated, additional cost associated with that, correct?
Yes, I mentioned that for that exactly.
Okay. So is that going to require further discussion another night or, or are you looking for, or can we have a motion tonight? It's not specific, I don't think, in the agenda to authorize additional expenditure for you to do further research on it.
The council already agreed and gave me direction to make the sales tax a special project. Um, so I just reminded the council tonight, knowing that it will be additional costs and it is a special project. The council already approved and gave me direction to do that. So anything that the council directs me to do based on that project will be additional cost. That's why I mentioned it tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Which is another great reason, reason not to over, over engineer this because we'll have a meter running while we're satisfying our fear factor.
If I could, I mean, you know, Mayor Hanson, you haven't spoken yet, but I would just recommend then, I, I know you're going to, but I would just recommend that if, if there's, you know, three or more votes of Councilmember Vodden's mindset, then we just move forward with drafting the sales tax and measure without paying attention to the initiative. Or the other option is to do a deeper dive as we're talking, starting this conversation, continue the item to the March twelfth meeting and allow the city attorney to do more research and analysis and come back with more research and analysis, as well as answering any questions that you email to me. That would be another option. So I think it sort of depends on where you stand and it looks like it's sort of a two two right now.
It is. Well, it's like a, like a one and a half, one and a half or something like that. So. One and three quarters. No, so anything further, Mr. Craig?
Yeah, kind of again back with, with David and his concern about being able to answer the muddy this up and make it more confusing. I would suggest to you that what would increase a lack of confidence is if somebody from the public came to you and said, what if? And you couldn't answer it, you're going to lose more credibility than if you have the answer to that question.
But I would.
You what?
I would have the answer.
Okay, so what if, what if this measure that passes that on this statewide passes, what are you going to do?
So it happens on the same ballot. It's the what if, and we would, we will either pass or fail on the merits of our proposal and sales to the citizens and all the value we're trying to convey to them. It will have passed or it will have failed. If it failed, the what if is, doesn't mean to make it, it won't matter. If, if that measure passes, then we address it with a past sales tax at one point five percent and a new law in place that will have to be studied and tested and challenged and delayed for a, for who knows how long. So we're on, meanwhile, we're collecting one point five percent sales tax. That's my what if answer.
If you use the Yuba County lawsuit that Marty spoke about. And the reason that lawsuit came about, by the way, was that they put up on the brand new ball diamond that they paid for with your sewer funds. And that's why that, that got held up in the suit, suit was because they used the sewer funds to build the ball diamond. That's the point. But as you pointed, the point of that though is, as she pointed out, that money could not be collected and used by the county at the time.
But again, in the what if question or hypothesis, we will have either a passed or failed sales tax. Failed is a non-issue. Passed, we at least have something to work from, a positive community statement that they're willing to support the sales tax. And now we deal with again, eventually the effects of this law, which as you know, as a former state person, it's, it's ridiculous. You've read it. It, it's got so many opponents and so many flaws and so much misguided information.
And that's why they compare it to making sausage.
There you go. So I, I, I'm willing to take the risk that it doesn't pass in the interest of the citizens, the budget and the sales tax initiative that we're going to put forth.
Anything further?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Good, good discussion, gentlemen. So Marty, it's my turn. So.
Okay.
Uh, I I completely understand and agree with everyone's points here. How's that? How's that? Mr. Vodden, I appreciate your, your comments definitely. And I agree with much of what you said. You know, Mr. Thomas, Rick, Rick would have liked to have seen a sunset clause during our initial discussion at our last session when we were discussing this, this very, you know, the sales tax measure in general. Not to be wishy washy in any way, but I agree with, with Evan's comments about the precautionary. I'm obviously, I, I'm this, this language is absurd in this potential, on this initiative. It's absolutely, it's absurd. It's conflicting. It's convoluted. Probably deliberately, and no doubt this will end up in court for years, years to come. So many jurisdictions will, will, will fall into this, fall into this crap, this, you know, it's, you know, this, and like, like you said, Rick, the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act, right? So it, you know, it should be up to the citizens to decide by majority vote to decide what services they either want or don't want. That's the way, that's the way the democratic and republic system needs to work to be, to be effective and, and, and efficient. I, I would I, I do like the Benicia example. I, I think that's well crafted, especially, especially with the language. And we know we need, we need to be very cautious on our, on our, it's a general, it's going to be a general sales tax maker for general purposes. I, I do really, really think that the Benicia language was well written. I think that I, I would like to see us move forward with a very similar drafted language, just to be safe. Just not, not because of this initiative, because of the general sales tax of purpose.
And if I may, Marty just explained to me that that was actually what the Yuba County lawsuit was about. I think it's important if you want to just give them a.
Well, just that the, the situation was that it was a general sales tax. They used Catherine Lu, the Lu Edwards Group, which you're all familiar with, which was used for the city's survey two, two years ago. And the argument was that the language that was used in the material that the Lu Edwards Group produced and used, sent out via direct mail to county residents basically was pushing the envelope. And the Jarvis group was arguing that it was treating it and stating that it was going to be used for specific things. Therefore, it's a special sales tax, not a general sales tax. And the county, of course, is positioned was it's a general sales tax. So that's how it ended up in court. And the first time the Jarvis group prevailed upon appeal, Yuba County prevailed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Marty.
Mr. Mayor, let me interject. My apologies to Marty. And I was referring to an initiative or a suit that happened some twelve or fourteen years ago, not realizing that one that you were making reference to was more recent than I was.
It's just a couple of years ago. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I thought that was good information for the council to see that, you know, we want to be careful about that language, the general language versus the specific purposes. And so that's why I wrote that memo that the council has.
Yeah. Well, and Councilor, you know, I appreciate your, your memorandum also. It's well, excellent information, well written, easily understood. So thank you very much for that. And I know it's, it's your first, your first stab at it. So and with more to come. But in reference to the Benicia example, you know, page thirty two on the staff report. You know, I, I think, you know, since we, we're just voicing our, our thoughts here, just to, just to voice this so everyone hears it. You know, as in reference to bullet number one, maintaining police services, I think maybe something more in line of maintaining, you know, effective police and fire services would, you know, along, you know, I, I think some, maybe a little bit of cleanup language specific to, to our purposes here. You know, the protecting, bullet two, protecting nine one one and fire emergency response times. That's important. I maybe suggest changing that to protecting law enforcement and fire emergency response times.
You, you actually did give us language at the twenty, January twenty third meeting and we can transcribe, I mean, you can continue, but we can also transcribe. Because you talked about protecting the general fund reserve was another
Sure.
Language that was used.
Okay. As long as, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. I just, I think that needs to be captured, maintaining, obviously maintaining local parks, preserving your recreation and library services and and most importantly, probably other than the public safety aspect is sustaining other vital city programs, right? And I do, I do also like the language that follows that, you know, shall the city of Benicia act a measure by adopting, you know, the sales tax, you know, general. you know, the sales tax, you know, general government purposes, with a providing approximately, you know, the dollar amount. Obviously, with the citizens oversight would be stricken, even though I, I would have liked to seen that. It was a consensus of the council not to move forward with the citizens oversight panel and strike that. But back to Rick's, back to my first, my first thought, I just wanted to cover that, I'm finished with that. Rick mentioned, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Rick. You know, I think a lot of you, you very well can speak for yourself, but you would have liked to have seen a sunset clause initially, correct?
Well, my thought process was that with the sunset, it makes it more palatable. And if we have a longer period of time, like a 10-year or longer, the goal of economic development that, that we need to push forward, that's, that's at least a 10-year window. And if we can adequately push for growth within the city of housing and some commercial businesses, and maybe capture some growth and opportunities through the site's reservoir, we could resolve revenue income problems and maybe actually lower that to a smaller amount or abandon it completely in the future if we're able to run the city effectively with economic development. But that is a long-term window before we actually see any real dollars. And that was, I thought, that would be an opportunity for, for us to further enhance a yes vote.
No, thank you, Rick. No, you know, I agree, I, I didn't agree with, with, with that method of operation initially. But I, in light of this, this initiative we're discussing, I, I think that would be wise, or I agree with Rick and Evan in that regard with the sunset date. And once again, the example that our city attorney presented, the Benicia example, has a 12-year sunset date. I, I think that would be perfect for our concerns with a 12-year sunset.
You want to make them?
I, I just, discussion.
When you're ready.
We're, we're this discussion, Mr. Vodden. With that, I, you know, like I say, sunset date with, with this, with this language that's, that's well crafted, that's what I'd like to see, that's not giving in to the initiative. That's in the event that the initiative passes, first of all, I think it's good business. It's good business on both aspects with the language and with the sunset date, just because of this initiative looming over our heads. And how many voters, okay, we all know voters that don't have a clue what they're voting for, right? Right? Someone sees a, a tax measure, if it says tax, they're going to vote no on it, whatever, right? And you know darn well, a lot of individuals are going to fall right in that trap with this well, with this crafted title, the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act initiative. We're a fiscally conservative community here. I'm a, I'm an extremely fiscally conservative individual and always have been. But this is nonsense. This is taking local control away from our local citizens. This is nonsense. And once again, I mean, you know, it's often, in this state, jurisdictions are under attack from, you know, you know, a 360-degree, you know, circle, you know, of influence. But this is just, this is downright crazy. It makes no sense. But anyway, that, that was my concern. I, I'm, I'm not caving to this initiative passing. Hopefully, if, if voters educate themselves and do the right thing, it'll fail miserably. If it does pass, it's going to end up in litigation, obviously, for God knows how long, because city jurisdictions aren't going to put up, they're not going to put up with this. They can't, from an operational standpoint. But anyway, those are, those are my thoughts on it, so.
I'd like to make a motion, sir.
Well, we're
Are we done with discussion? You've been all around the horn here.
We're, we're
You can discuss the motion, how's that? Maybe the last, die for lack of
I think we're discussing, taking this information back to
Well, they want direction, and I was going to make a motion that we provide them with direction.
Well, we could
And then we can move on.
We can add a motion to give direction. We could, yeah. Well, we don't need a motion to give, give the direction.
You want a motion? You said something about a motion earlier.
I said that if you'd like to move forward and give direction for us to craft the ordinance, because you've got consensus.
So that way we can see where we really all stand.
More information, you can continue.
Gary, because it might be three-two, for all we know, and then we can move on.
Well, I was just thinking, you know, there may be, there, Mr. Vodden, just, our counselor may have more information, you know, at our next, at our next meeting.
I will, I, I think that actually the council already gave direction to staff to draft the ordinance. The reason why we brought this information to you was to confirm that you did want to go forward with what you had already given us direction.
And I'd like to say the following. I would like to see staff and the city attorney direct, design, create whatever it were, a ordinance for the sales tax for the city of Willows at 1.5% for the November ballot, which, which does not take into account the effects of this proposed state ordinance, but which does now add a 10-year sunset clause as a possible appeal, if, if in fact that appeals to anyone. And, and I think it's a righteous modification. So spend no time, money, and effort and energy trying to decipher what the entire state of California is trying to decipher for us, and move forward with our sales tax proposal in the simplest, most straightforward words, terms, values, benefits, all of the above. That's what I would like to say.
I think there was an interest in 12 years, is what I heard.
Whatever you want.
Okay.
Benicia plan.
Well, that's not
The Benicia plan was a 12-year with a review and 10 years on the
There you go, that's, that's good.
Okay, well, got a motion on the, on the floor.
I had to make, I can't make a motion. I just told you what I thought you should do. That's what we were supposed to do, right?
Yeah, we're, we're providing direction to staff at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to see 15 years, personally. I think 15. I think that the sunset clause is a good thing. I think that it is no different than us giving a business a conditional use permit for one, three, or five years.
I would agree with that, Evan.
Except that I think that for our city, I think that for us to get the income coming in and then for us to get back on our feet to start the economic development that's needed, I think 10 years is going to be pushing that limit. And I don't want to see us in 10 years looking to need another sales tax because we're running out of money again at year 12, right when everything's getting ready to start picking off. So I would say 15 years to give us kind of a safe space. It gives everybody an ending, foreseeable ending, but hopefully gets the city back on its feet to strive on forward.
So I have a question. So what I'm, I'm hearing is you want us to bring back an ordinance and resolution with a 15-year expiration date now? Unless there's objections to that.
I like the word sunset better than expiration.
Okay, sunset. And then the Benicia resolution with the friendly amendments from tonight, plus the January 23rd meeting, which we will, what's it called when you transcribe? And then the other big question that I have is, do you want us to come back with a deeper dive on this, you know, taxpayer protection initiative with more answers? Or are we scrapping that now because we've decided we're moving forward?
Direct all of us to do our own research. It's all available. Why do we have to pay to do it? It's all available. Go to the League of Cities.
I don't disagree, Councilmember Vodden, and I don't direct council to do anything they don't want to do.
I'll take your direction.
Well, yeah, yeah, I, I, you know, with this discussion, I think it'd be, you know, why is it pursued? You know, excellent language, you know, instead of wasting, you know, spinning our wheels with more research on this crazy initiative. Really, at this point, did Mr. Vodden agree? Mr. Thomas, agree with me on that?
I am. I'd like to know what we're possibly facing. So I am not necessarily in agreement with you three, so there's already a three, one, so.
I can't answer your questions that you did pose to me now, if you want to.
That's fine, but like you said, though, it's super vague, and we're working on getting more answers from the in-depth knowledge of it, correct? Or?
Yes, to the extent possible, because I don't know if they actually exist.
Okay.
But your, your question, I do know the answer to.
Okay.
The policy statement, yes, you would certainly not be able to say specifically what they're for. It would just be, they actually have a generic term in the initiative that you have to use. And you have to, if you want to change that generic reasoning, you have to have a separate outlet measure or something to
Like an advisory?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and that's the answer to the first question. The second question is the sunset clause. Yes, you can have a long, you can not have a sunset clause, because technically speaking, that's what changed in this initiative, is that they're forcing every ballot or every sales tax measure to have a sunset clause for a specific period of time. So in essence, yes, you could have it be long enough. But again, I don't know the answer to what the initiative is saying is going to be a reasonable, specific period of time, because it hasn't been challenged yet. So they're not, you know, the only way that we get answers as lawyers to specific questions, like for instance, it has to have a specific period of time. Well, can that specific period of time be 1,000 years? I don't know the answer to that, because we haven't had the initiative pass, we haven't
No, I understand that.
So I, I hate to say that, because I know it's not the answer that really helps you. But it's, I, I might not ever have a question or answer to that question until five years from now, if it passes. And then the third one was, what fees will be impacted? And I think we answered that, all of them would be impacted, because we're redoing our Matthew schedule in this district specifically. So every single one that we redo or raise are going to be impacted.
I think you asked something about a two-thirds vote.
That was answered, though, because it's legislative, not
Okay.
Can you prove it, Evan? No, my only suggestion is that we continue with what we currently had going, just add a 15-year sunset clause to it. I like the way Benicia has it written out.
And no further research on the taxpayer protection initiative, right?
We'll do it.
Not unless for some reason there's something that comes out that says, here's the specifics of it. But I mean, if it's as vague as, as being described, then there's probably not.
Let's reserve that for when we know
Yeah, we're going to hear a lot more about this, and we'll have a lot different questions. So why be the first ones to ask what day of the week it is? Let's save the money. So I want to make a little historical reference here, if I may. So when Casey and Rick and I ran for office, we, one of the things that was just overwhelmingly outlandish to us was the legal fees that the city had paid to the prior city attorney. And we just couldn't believe it. We investigated it, we checked it, we changed attorneys. And so I would only simply say this, that I won't sit up here and use our city attorney for easy answers at the cost of what it would cost, when in fact we stood and said that we thought the last city attorney's bill was overwhelmingly outlandish and unreasonable for the citizens of Willows. It's a no offense to you, my dear, but I don't think you should be, you know, on call 24/7 to run up a bill. I mean, you should get paid, but you know what I mean.
Well, that's why I brought it up, because I wanted to be very clear what that means to the city.
Thank you.
The other thing is, I think there are a couple of more, I guess, summaries or articles regarding the initiative. I'm happy to send, I think that might be easier. And it's other lawyers' research, but it's certainly what is guiding this, the fight against the initiative. I can send that to you, or through Marty, to you.
Please.
I'd like to get League of Cities material, too. I get it, but maybe that could be distributed.
That's really what
That's what
So it is in the packet, the attachments are from the League.
And, and Newsom's, I don't, I don't think I've read any detail on Newsom's attack on this. I know he's doing it, I just don't know what his basis is. And I'm sure it's been said here tonight, a lot of his basis, but he's got a big court behind him called the State of California.
Through this conversation, I have one more question that popped into my mind. Can the city campaign against this Taxpayer Protection Government Accounting Act while asking for sales? Is that any kind of a violation of our, our practice, the Town Act, or anything else?
Well, if you recall, the September council meeting where the, the League of California Cities asked every city if they would pass a resolution and against it, and that came before the council last September. So we were going to, you know, it was potentially, that was a, a potential way for the, the city to voice its opposition.
Is it too late?
No, they would, I think they'd love it if, I mean, I've been asked more than once, and I haven't come back to all of you because I figured you didn't want to do it, so.
That, future gen item, gentlemen?
Absolutely.
In fact, in fact, the League of California Cities even said, if your council wants, you know, a presentation by us, we'll do a presentation. I just, the, you know, what I got in September made me think there wasn't too, too much interest in that, so.
There'll be a future next agenda? Is it possible to bring that forward, next agenda?
Sure. You want a presentation, or you just want a resolution in opposition?
Gentlemen?
It might be helpful if you want more information to get a presentation from them.
And not free. Free.
She, she is right.
Did you say free?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Okay.
Consensus of the
It may not be the March 12th one, but I'll get them as soon as I, as quickly as I can.
Is it consensus of the council to have a presentation on the matter?
Yes.
Okay, consensus, yes, majority consensus.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Okay. Are you clear on the direction?
I think so.
I am, yes.
I am, yep.
Very good.
Okay.
Anything further from the council reference to item 7B?
Let me understand. Motion died for lack of a second.
I didn't actually, I didn't
We got direction.
Direction, any further, Mr. Craig? No. Anything further, Marty, Carolyn?
No.
Okay, very good. Gentlemen? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item eight, comments and reports. Item eight A, council correspondence. I have received no council correspondence in our tonight's meeting. Marty?
I'm sorry?
I have received no council correspondence.
No, there, there's
Okay, very good. Item eight B, city council comments and reports. Mr. Thomas, start with you.
Yes, I have several. The Boys and Girls Club of North Valley are hosting a tour on Friday, March 1st at 3:00 PM at 601 Wall Street. It's been spearheaded by the county. I had her name up here earlier, and it's, my computer went to sleep. It's for anybody who desires to go to learn more about what the Boys and Girls Club can do. And it's exploring the concept of trying to bring a Boys and Girls Club to the city of Willows. So I would encourage anybody that's into recreation and, and activities for youth to consider attending. That would be 601 Wall Street, 3:00 PM on Friday. Also, after the last meeting, I spoke with Joanne, our accounting manager, about revamping and re reviewing the finance committee's protocols in light of having Tyler services, the accounting process, to revisit the provisions of oversight for fire finance department. Some of the things as a finance committee chair member we haven't done is we don't look at the investment accounts or the, where the money is parked, and some of that stuff. So I would like to just inform the council that she's agreed that we need to have some sort of a protocol. So talk to Marty about it as well. We'll be moving forward with some sort of research on that, hopefully bringing something back to the, to this council at a later date. The beauty of that would be, it would go hand-in-hand with accountability to our citizens. So they see that the council has got a protocol and a methodology under the new Tyler accounting system, and that we've updated our practices. Last item is the Law Enforcement Ad Hoc Committee. Gary and I met with Brian Uller. Is that how we say that? He's with Municipal Resource Group. We met with him this afternoon. He's a 10-year police chief, two-year fire chief by default while he was police chief. Member of the San Francisco Bar and a master's in public administration. And we spoke to him about putting forth a scope of work for the restoration of a Willows Police Department for a future council consideration.
Good, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Vodden?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I have answered. The big item for me is that we have merged Imagine Willows with Marlena Sparkman's efforts that she put out last Thursday night. They had a meeting. It's also targeting, looking long-term, positive, futuristic visions, ideas, plans, thoughts, dreams of a better Willows, better county. And so there will be no more Monday night before the councils at the senior center. I'd like to thank the senior center, and especially Kathy McFessel, who was always arranged for it to be open and the heat on. And it was enjoyable. It was started out as part of the pool project. I'm very pleased, and I will never give up on the pool. So we know that it's on the plan, it's going to happen. And so I, again, I'm grateful to the men and women who came to that. We had as many as 25 people at one time, and, and I think we also, we ultimately
converted from a kind of a complaint session to a, what can we do better and what can be better for the citizens of Willows? And I am grateful for being a part of it. It's now merged with Marlena Sparkman's, uh, support, Glen County Support City of Willows.
Thank you, David. Anything further? Okay, very good. Ms., uh, Ms. Redson?
Um, I don't have any, uh, committee meetings to speak on. Um, just one thing I wanted to bring up to the council and possibly future ideas is us, uh, the council possibly getting together and starting to have, um, some sort of a goal-setting roundtable for the future of Willows, um, instead of hitting items as they, um, instead of reacting, I'd like to start seeing us, um, taking action first and hopefully, uh, get us together and start doing some sort of roundtable to figure out where we want, where we wanna see the city be in five, ten, fifteen, thirty years, things like that. And I think that that'd be a good thing for us to do. Um, we're supposed to be up here and making the best decisions and sometimes we're reacting to a situation more than we're, uh, taking the action and taking the charge to them. So, that's all I really have.
Thank you, Evan. Mr. Sprague?
Um, yes, I do. Um, we've got a dinner coming up on the twenty-ninth, joint council, um, with the both the city council and the board of supervisors. Um, recently, I've gone under some doctor appointments and tests and whatnot, and my doctor tells me that I've got three major ailments. I have the body of a ninety-five-year-old, the enthusiasm of a thirty-five-year-old, and the mentality of a five-year-old, and nothing that they can do about any of them. There's levity in that, please, thank you.
I'm smiling.
Okay.
I was agreeing.
None of it is serious, none of it is curable, but nevertheless, but the point I'm trying to make is, um, Rick will attest to this, I've put my feet under his dinner table several times. He knows the difficulty that I have in sitting more than fifteen or twenty minutes at, at a time. And, uh, standing at a function like this and sitting down for dinner, I'm gonna ask the mayor if he would apologize to those that attend for my absence because it just, even tonight, albeit it's my duty, I live with the pain, but something like this, I'm just gonna have to avoid. I just know the pain. I apologized to the police chief last week that I won't be able to attend their function on the first Sunday and so on for the same.
Okay, Mr. Sprague.
I'd be happy to do so. If you would apologize to the people for that.
Sure.
I would, thank you. But the other thing is, I did wanna revisit what I put on the agenda last time, if I might, unless you've got comments, then then I could kinda bring up an agenda item that I would like to discuss, which you, which you-
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Sprague. If you had some comments that you wanted to make first, then I would like to bounce back.
That'll work out perfectly. I just, I only have one item tonight and I'll get that out of the way real quick. Uh, as, as I, you know, report every meeting, uh, we are diligently working, uh, as a board and groundwater authority, which I chair in reference, uh, to our groundwater sustainability plan. We had a, uh, our second, uh, special joint meeting with the exclusive groundwater authority and the Glen groundwater authority last Friday, February twenty-third at the, uh, in Maxwell at the sites, uh, offices. Our second meeting, uh, at, at that facility, uh, there will be more, uh, more to follow. But we are, as I said, working very diligently toward the, uh, groundwater sustainability plan timeline, which is coming up on, uh, approximately April twenty-third, when we have to have our, uh, corrected report, um, amended report rather, submitted to the Department of Water Resources. So, still working on that and will be working on it. It's all, all hands on deck. So, Mr. Sprague?
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, item that was, that I put on the agenda last time, and I thought I was following protocol here, that in another correspondence that the ma, city managers identified for us that, uh, wherein she says Councilman Sprague recently requested that several items be placed on the upcoming agenda. Her council's protocol manual, I requested that he bring those items to the full council to seek the council's consensus to agendize his item, uh, for a future council, uh, meeting. Um, I gave you a copy of what I provided that I thought we would talk about last time. It was the spending or the using the money of the, uh, facade improvement program for some, uh, wayfinding signs. This item was brought to my attention shortly after I was appointed to the city council and asked that if I would bring this up and so that we could discuss it. And so, I did put that on the agenda, but then it, I, I copied you on a recent email that I received from the city manager, uh, which says that the GILL funds four hundred, uh, four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars are insufficient to apply for a Caltrans encroachment permit design and produce the new signs, et cetera. Staff will re-agendize this item for a council consideration during the budget process, example, Mayor June. Um, I would have preferred to have been able to present this before, um, it was postponed that far. And the reason that I did, I'm referring to a couple of emails that I received, um, in response to my request. This was from the, um, what is his title? He's got a title here particularly, County Glen, uh, Glen County Transportation Plan. Uh, there, he responded to my request or my inquiry in December, and he said, there is a possibility that we can incorporate this project, the wayfinding sign, into the agency's overall work program, which provides funding for cities' projects. If the city of Willows wants to proceed with this project, then we can fund the consultant to look at where and add more, where and able, ability to add more wayfinding signs. The city can then apply for grants for these funds, um, for the signs. And then, most recently, you may mention the discussions underway regarding potential funding opportunities for the signs. So, the point is that I've already opened dialogue, uh, not only with the county folks that might have funding available, uh, for us and with Caltrans. In addition to that, some corporate sponsors that might be willing to be able to pay and offset some of the costs associated with the, the locations and, and so on. So, it seemed reasonable to me to bring this to the council first, thinking that I, we have possibly the funding that, uh, Ms. Brown is worried, worried about that we don't have. But it seemed appropriate to me that there was buy-in by the council to at least allow me to move forward with further discussion. If there is no disposition amongst the council to relocate some of the signs and maybe repair some of the signs or whatever, then we need further dialogue on my part with other agencies and other funding sources at point. So, that's why I wanted to have that on the agenda and with the discussion. So, as the protocol manual says, according to the city manager, uh, that I, I require a consensus to put that on the agenda, I would ask for this to be put on the agenda for the next meeting for further discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague. So, uh, with Marty Thomas?
No, no, he has an assistant that I was interacting with, Carlos, you know Carlos?
Carlos, okay.
Yep, he very, he was very encouraging and very enthusiastic about being able to help.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, council?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Can I, can I say something, actually?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, so, this is the first I'm hearing about all these other funds and, and other, uh, resources that might be available. I wasn't aware that there were other options.
Hence my reason to put it on the council for discussion.
Well, usually, actually, council members just share it with me first and we work through it that way. But I think actually, this is a great example of what Councilmember Hudson just brought up. So, if things just keep piling on our plate because one person brings it forward and everybody says, that sounds great, pretty soon, the plate's gonna have to get bigger. And right now, the staff actually have a full plate of things to work on that have already been approved. And because we don't have a council, you know, priorities and goal setting, as Councilmember Hudson brought up, um, we don't have a, a system or process to evaluate against whether or not this truly is a council priority. Is the wayfinding signs a priority for the council right now, today? Because the next agenda is actually packed. So, if it's, if it's a priority today, then maybe something else needs to come off the plate. Because, you know, th, this is the, the problem. If, if everybody gets to do whatever they want as individuals and it's not really a collective effort, it becomes a challenge for staff to end up managing. So, um, which is why a council goal-setting is an awesome idea. I fully think that would be really great to do. But I, I just, I just wanna point that out to the council that, that it becomes challenging. I don't really see what the issue is with waiting until we can work this into the budget. And in the meantime, it'd be great if Councilmember Sprague would share that contact information with me so that staff could try to reach out and do some of that research. Because actually, at the end of the day, it'll come back to us. Staff will have to do the work. We're, we are the staff people. We will actually have to work on it. So, it'd be great to share that information with us now and let us work it into the schedule in a way that works with all the other things that are on our plates. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Marty. No, in reference to the overall work program. Yeah, that's, you know, we recently approved, the Glen County Transportation Commission recently approved, uh, the overall work program and actually an amendment, uh, recent amendment last month, uh, to the overall work program also. And that's, uh, you know, and that's when staff, uh, at different levels of staff, including it'd be Joe Benkortner in our situation and Marty Brown and, and our city engineer as well, uh, you know, that's where these, these types of, uh, of, uh, projects, uh, you know, are brought to staff's attention and staff develops those in, into the overall work program along with the, uh, the county staff, you know, Marty Thomas and his team, Carlos and Ashley. Uh, I, I think it's a, you know, it's a definitely a very viable, uh, project, it sounds like. But there are ways to, to work that into the overall work, work program. But, uh, either way, so, uh, just my comments on it.
Well, actually, I kind of anticipated that that would be the response. And so, I took it back to the people that asked me to put this on agenda to discuss it. And, uh, you'll see that they actually did a little homework and actually came up with a better sign idea than the scratch that I put together and, and so on. Um, to answer your, your target, I think, David, you used five, ten years from now, what I heard, ten, fifteen, maybe even twenty years from now. And, uh, other people have heard that. And the message that they've asked me to bring back is, I don't know that I'll be here in five, five years from now. I don't know if I'll be here next week. I need to get businesses down to downtown, traffic downtown to my business. And right now, they're looking at the wayfind, finding signs. They look at the one that, that shows going downtown. They look at that and say, as soon as they turn the corner and see those two houses on the left-hand side, they probably do a U-turn and go right back out on Woods. So, if we wanna wait for ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, that's-
I don't think that was a message. But, but anyway, may I?
I don't know.
Well, that, that's a long-term planning process. This has nothing to do, I think the idea of signage has merit. I don't know that we can't talk about it without committing staff time because I understand that.
I've already, that, that's the point I'm making. She defers everything, stuff, don't have time, don't have time, don't have-
Not everything.
I've agreed that I'll spend the time.
Okay. Well, let me, let me, uh, let me respond in total. Um, a couple of thoughts come to my mind. First of all, signage is always good to direct people places. Uh, if anybody can figure out how to increase business in a week, I wanna hear from them today or tomorrow. Um, I would like to see what this has to do with the Caltrans strategy or current plan or whatever level this plan is for Highway one sixty-two, Wood Street, because it lends itself to perhaps inducing or introducing signage into their plan.
Exactly.
Yeah. So, I mean, I like that. And, uh, and you know, there was a time when the Chamber of Commerce went out on their limb and put signs up here, there, in a few places, historic this and whatnot that. So, there might be, and maybe you've already got this worked out, there might be agencies, not the city, who would assist in making some of these things happen. As far as encroachment for, for, you know, government, Caltrans and whatnot, that's a bigger deal. But anyway, I, I don't see anything wrong with talking about it, especially if we don't tie up the city, as you said you would not, or it would not, not you personally. So, let's, what's the worst thing that could happen? Let's find out what Caltrans is doing, if the county's willing to help, if this chamber's willing to help, maybe a couple services. You said private funding also, if I heard you correctly?
Exactly.
So, um, what's the worst thing that could happen?
Okay, so, so are those people all gonna interpret our code, prepare the staff report, bring forward to approval? You're gonna do all of that and look at the code and determine whether or not and get the encroachment permit and all that?
You know what? You're absolutely right, Marty. I'm not gonna do squat with it.
It's simply a question.
I'll do as much as I'm capable of doing, which will be quite a bit. And then if you, you need to put your polish on it to present it to the council, certainly, I would bring it to you. But I would do the heavy lifting before I ever did. This is the kind of stuff-
It's a council decision.
... towards progress for this city. The squelching other people that wanna be able to come in and help do stuff, whether it's businesses downtown, other city council members, it has to go through the bureaucracy first before it can be-
Well, that's why we're overhauling the municipal code to make it easier to do business in the city and master fee schedule. And I mean, there's all sorts of things that we're doing. And it's actually unfortunate that you're gonna miss the PowerPoint on Thursday night because there's all these great accomplishments that we've done over the last year and great initiatives on the horizon that are other things we'll be working on. I'll be sure to send you a copy of the PowerPoint so you can see what those things are.
You bet. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hudson?
Um, no, when this was first brought up to me, I, I do think that the wayfinding signs are, um, they're in poor shape currently around town. Um, I haven't, I've mentioned that. Um, I've mentioned the idea of something like what Orland did. Um, I know it's not the best thing to bring up Orland when we're discussing running our town. But, um, when my business was up there, they had a third-party company come through and they offered to sell us signage, very similar to what we have with our banners around town. Um, but what it did is it marked what businesses were down which streets, um, and not necessarily how to exactly get to them, but it marked what businesses were where, you know? And, um, I had, we had been in that building in Orland for thirteen years, and I still had customers that had been twenty-year customers saying, where's your office located at in Orland? Why? Because we're off the beaten path. Um, and so, I do understand the businesses on Sycamore getting fed up with, um, not getting the traffic that's on Wood Street. Um, is it a priority? I, I don't know. I'd have to look at a list of what's priority and what's not priority. Um, I do think it's the job of the council to be the ones making the policy and bringing what our decision is to the city staff and have the city staff do the work. I also believe it's the council's position to be in agreeance on what we're bringing to the staff. Um, and it sounds like this is something that's on a lot of the council's mind, so I would say yes to this.
Okay, Evan, thank you. You, you know, in reference to the signage, I, I don't, I don't see a problem of moving it to a, a future, uh, agenda for discussion. But I'd like to add, uh, if we're gonna talk about signage, uh, there is, I requested a signage study for Sherat one sixty-two from Caltrans, which, which has been in the work for many months. And so far, we've received nothing that's from the Glen County Transportation Commission. Uh, the bulk of that was in relationship to, uh, safety signage in the area of, of Walden School and other areas on Sherat one sixty-two. But also, uh, uh, the historic, the old historic ninety-nine signage on, on Amistri is in poor shape, very poor shape. Matter of fact, if you don't know it's there, you can't see it anymore because it's hard to see. So, so I, you know, if we're gonna talk about signage, I'd like to add the historic ninety-nine signage on Amistri, also known as Cannon Road ninety-nine, county jurisdiction, discussed. Uh, but, uh, it, as far as, you know, uh, having discussion and maybe, uh, with, with the wayfinding signage part of the overall work program, that, that'd be a real viable option for sure. But I also just like, like to remind the council, I've reported on it before, uh, Kieran Mantelli, our former planner, I was, I was in discussions with her and, uh, community members as well, with Caltrans, with Caltrans right here in this, in this building, uh, with our, with our most recent, uh, Caltrans liaison with the Transportation Commission in reference to wayfinding signage, not, not this particular wayfinding signage, but freeway, freeway access, brown, the brown sign- but freeway, freeway access, brown, the brown signs, identification signs. So that's still out there and Karen had a, Karen had a workup in progress in, in her office here when she had time permitting. It's not, it's not finished, but it's a workup in progress. There were some obstacles. There were some state obstacles in reference to parts of that. It's kind of complicated, but maybe, and, and back to Evan's, Evan's idea of a, you know, of a, of a strategy session. I mean, if we're gonna do the signage, really, the way I see it, instead of piecemeal, let's, let's have a discussion on, on, on all the wayfinding signage, right? Not just parts of the wayfinding signage. I don't see a problem with having a, a future agenda item on it.
And unless, and my main thing with the roundtable idea is set priorities, set goals for what we want to do. Is wayfinding signage number one, sales tax number one.
True.
Obviously, we know the correct answer to that. That was obviously.
Creating foot traffic.
Right. So where are our priorities lying and what's, where's first, what's second, who's third? You know, kind of need to get that figured out. And I feel like we're, like I said, scrambling in that area. And it's something that definitely could, and then it helps staff. It gives them a direction, a better direction, if I'm not mistaken. It gives them a better direction to say, hey, okay, we got priority one, two, three, and this one's priority ten, so it's gonna go here to the bottom of the pile. Until we get the first sign taken care of. So yeah, I, I think that the wayfinding signs are a great idea. I would say it's not high priority on my list of what needs to be done around here and as far as the city goes to making sure that we are sustainable for the future. I think it is very helpful towards that goal. So I wouldn't mind seeing a presentation on it. And yeah, I really think a, a roundtable, getting everyone on the same page and getting a decent understanding of how the government works, how we're the policy setters. And we give direction. We're not the ones on the ground doing the legwork, but making sure that when we send the ones out to do the legwork, that they have a, a good direction to go to and that they're working on the priorities that we have. So.
I think it, it's also important just to, as a reminder, that, you know, the city attorney, we talk about the city attorney as a, as a contractor and that there's a budget, it's finite, that is attached to the city attorney's work. But we have three other major contractors here, actually four. We have the city engineer, the building official, the city planner, and Andy Heath, our finance consultant. So a lot of the times when, you know, I hear ideas from the council, one of those four people also has to be engaged. It's not just the city attorney. And there's a budget that's been approved by the council and it's my job to make sure we stay within that budget. And it's just another thing I would want to remind the council of.
Which I think would be great for the roundtable because then they would know exactly where we're overstepping and where we're overspending, not overstepping, but overspending.
Yeah, thank you, Marty. Thank you, Evan. No, no, I mean, it's just good, it just makes good business sense to have a roundtable and list the priority. Absolutely, absolutely.
Well, I think the city manager kind of emphasized my point is my willingness to be able to do some of that heavy lifting ahead of having to bring it to the city staff that would in fact charge the same, would cost, charge the city some of the stuff that I could be and would be willing to do. But you know what? I've kind of lost my enthusiasm.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Thomas?
If I may. I like the concept of, of a roundtable and, and future discussion, but at the same time, that's bureaucracy. It's, what happens is that we talk about it, talk about it and talk about it. Nine and ten months, a year later, we might get a sign up. I think what Mr. Sprague is talking about is fairly simple. Three or four signs replacing what's existing. Am I wrong?
You're absolutely right.
So I would pursue, if I may, I would say, let's replace those signs that are already there that are falling down. Let's find out what they are and replace them. And I say, if you can find out how much they cost and where we can buy them and it's a simple matter of, comes in under forty-seven hundred dollars, let's put them up.
And just want to.
I would hate to wait six, nine months when we could do something and have it done in thirty days.
Thank you.
Want to remind the council, this is not an action item. So the council just needs to put it back on the agenda and then we can go from there, but.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank you very much. This is, we are under council member reports.
And that's again, I was trying to find protocol to get consensus to bring it up on the agenda again.
Yes, and, and that's appropriate. I just wanted to make sure we weren't taking action right now on it.
No, yeah, good reminder, Carolyn. Thank you very much. That's why you're here. Thank you. So there.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
There, there are, under council comments, there are two questions. Basically, it sounds like there are two, two different topics for future agenda items. One is, is the wayfinding signage, the specific signage. Would it, would the council preference be to expand that to the old historic ninety-nine signage only on Davis Street also or not?
I'd rather hear what Forrest has to say. He's been working on it. He's got a vision and a plan. And if he wants to include ninety-nine, let him be the guy that brings it to us and says why, that's a good idea.
Very good. Just figured I'd mention what we're talking.
Oh, I understand. I mean, there's a whole group that wants to work on ninety-nine. So there was anything on ninety-nine that would help, but.
Future, so this would be a consensus of the council's a future agenda item, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. In reference to wayfinding signs, as mentioned by Mr. Sprague. Secondly, a future council discussion for a council, city council roundtable in the near future?
Yes.
So is this, is this the goal setting and priority setting you mentioned earlier or anything else?
Goal setting, yes, goal setting and priority setting.
You know, having done Imagine Willows for, from day one of this, my assignment, it's a great process. Once you get people past, past and the current, to start thinking and talking. Their eyes brighten, their faces lighten up. The idea that there is a better future out there and ideas that are really not on the table can maybe come to fruition really makes, makes good energy. So yes, Evan, let's do it.
Okay, very good. We have consensus. Marty, any questions?
When did you want these items on the agenda?
Gentlemen?
I signed it to Evan Hudson to determine the date, time and place and work it out with staff.
Oh, the delegation's great. When can it? I don't know. You, you had mentioned that you had seen it work in other cities before. So I would leave that.
Takes time to put something together like that and we're headed into the budget season here.
Worked on that offline.
Yeah.
I agree with Rick.
Right. So to be determined for that item, okay? The other item?
And, and Evan, please include Marlena in, in her program because we just handed off Imagine Willows and she's motivated to exactly what you're talking about. So let's not exclude her or her effort.
Planning commission.
The main idea I think behind what we're talking about is to make sure the council members are kind of on the same, same board with the city staff. It was, was my main intention. And then our, the committee, you know, we can bring our committee items to that and then kind of prioritize, hey, this is, yes, we all agree that we need to focus on this. We need to focus on these items and go from there. So.
If it's all right, I'll talk with her and maybe, you know, help me come up with some inputs. Share from that body of people that are doing this.
Okay, what's in reference to wayfinding sign item?
Yeah, let me modify that and I, let me answer Rick's question on this.
I'm looking for a timeline, just a timeline, then we can move on for future agenda item.
Give me, give me about three weeks, put something better together. What I'm hearing is expanding it a little bit, as you pointed out, ninety-nine. What I'm hearing maybe from Rick is something going down Lassen Street to the museum, et cetera. So let me, let me, let me put some more flesh on.
Okay, a couple of meetings down the road. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sprague. I'll let Marty know when I'm prepared for it. She can. Thank you. Anything further, council member reports and comments? Okay, item eight C, city manager's report. Marty Brown?
The only thing I wanted to mention was just that the RFQ for the contract recreation manager went out and the deadline and closing date is this Friday. And so far, we've received one proposal. See how that goes.
Yeah, thank you, Marty. Anything further?
Any news on the dinner Thursday night? I mean, do we have good attendance? Do we have a?
I'm still, I think we have four, five from the county. I think all four supervisors and the county administrator might be a little bit late, he said. And I don't think I've heard from a city manager yet. No, I haven't.
Okay.
Yeah. I got a slide for PowerPoint from him today, but that's it.
Very good. Anything further, Marty?
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just reflect and make sure the record reflects this. And I know you kept your the same, but we reconvened in the regular session after a closed session item at six P M straight up. I don't believe I mentioned the time. So I'm kind of, you know. OCD kicks in about those times. There you go. So thank you. Thank you, Emmett. Moving on to item nine, closed session pursuant to government code sections five four nine, five four point three. The public will have an opportunity to directly address a legislative body in the item below, items below, prior to the council convening in the closed session. And public comments are generally restricted to three minutes. Item nine A, conference with labor negotiators, five four nine, five seven point six. Agency designated representatives. Marty Brown, city manager, and Carolyn Walker, city attorney, employee organizations, Willows Employee Association, UPEC and management. Item nine B, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, section five four nine, five six point nine. Name of case, Forbes versus County of Glen. And item nine C, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, five four nine, five six point nine. Name of case, Willow's Residence for Due Process versus Respondent and Willow's Unified School District. And item nine D, public employee performance evaluation, section five four nine, five seven, title, city manager. Any public comments in reference to those items before moving to closed session? Hearing none. The time is nineteen fifty-nine hours, seven fifty-nine P M. We'll move into closed session at this time. Have a good night.
We have a party date?
Oh, yes. God, yes, that's where I'm going. Good evening, everyone. It's eight thirty-two P M. It's still Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Reconvening into open session from our closed session, items nine A, B, C and D. Information was received by the city council and direction given to staff. Moving on to item ten, adjournment. Time is still eight thirty-two P M. Have a great rest of the week and meeting adjourned. Good night. Thanks, everybody.